Okay, the city of Campbell is no longer requiring face coverings be worn inside city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear face covering should that make them feel more comfortable. Should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. So now I'll call to order the special meeting, this special meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. The special city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Vice Mayor Bybee?
Present.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Here, thank you. We'll now go to public comment, and this would be for anybody wishing to comment on items not on the current agenda. You have up to two minutes to speak. Do we have anybody who wants to speak not on the agenda?
I do not have anybody online.
Okay, so we'll move to unfinished business. This is item one. Review Campbell's plan for housing objectives, policies, and programs PLN two thousand twenty-one dash twelve. And introduction is from?
Robbie Eastwood, Community Development Director. Good evening. Thank you. Okay, first off, as always, I'll introduce the staff that will be supporting tonight. In addition, myself, I have Stephen Rose here, Senior Planner, who we've seen many times, and we do have a consultant team here to support you also. Jeff Bradley, you'll see in your left-hand corner. And online, we have Brittany Bendix and Asher Khan, who will both help be presenting tonight. So, uh, so for tonight, uh, this is part two, uh, of the discussion on Campbell's Plan for Housing on Policies and Programs. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and kick off with the first initial slides, and then we'll hand it off to our M Group staff to handle the bulk of the presentation. Next.
Yes. Rob, can we, I just want to make sure, I think you're going to go through a summary and then go over the changes based on our input, and then at that point, we'll stop for questions or comments on the changes that were made.
Correct. Yeah, as you use this slide to lay out the proposed structure for the evening, if it's okay with the council and the public, so anticipate how you read the presentation, engage with the council tonight. Uh, the, the first part of the presentation will just be, uh, staff presentation will stop uh, after presenting what we heard from you at the last meeting, just to make sure we got it right. If there's any questions on that, uh, after that will be the, the sort of the main course of the evening, which is presenting the policies and programs. Uh, our focus tonight, uh, in your, in your packet, you have a tables that have a lot of policies and programs that we are proposing, put in the, the draft housing element. We have pulled out about five to six key policy and programs that both you've, um, had some discussion on your last meeting and the planning commission did. Uh, we're bringing those to you from our substantive input. That being said, tonight, if there's any of the policies, programs that the council would like to talk out of the tables that we're not talking about, there's more, more and provided opportunity to, we can support that discussion. But just given past feedback, we pull out, I think, some, some key points for discussion. That'll be the bulk of the presentation. Uh, after that, we'll stop. Uh, council questions, uh, we, um, suggest at that point you take in public comment after the public heard the presentation. And then the, the idea is to go back and go into those, each of those five key, uh, areas and, and see what council feedback there is. And then we could stop at the end if there's any additional discussion, but that would be the proposed structure for tonight, uh, to present to you. Uh, with that, uh, you've seen the slide before, but just reframe that in the process. We're all on, uh, an objective to get our housing element, uh, done and adopted by the end of this year. Uh, we are in the stage of finishing preparation and publication of the draft housing element. Uh, the last piece of this is identifying the draft policies and programs that will go into the, uh, the draft housing element. Our target is to publish that, uh, later in May, pending council, uh, feedback and direction tonight. Next. Did just want to highlight, we have continued with extensive community outreach, um, even up until this afternoon. So we have in total, just want to highlight, um, to the council that we've done our best to, to, to go out to all key stakeholders uh, that we know of around the housing element, housing issues. In addition to the five community meetings, we've met with affordable housing developers, market rate developers twice. We actually met with them about a week or two ago to get more input on some of the issues, uh, you'll look at tonight, uh, such as parking and affordable housing programs. Uh, we've also done some additional outreach meetings, uh, recently, talking with service providers. Uh, also did give a presentation to the Rotary Club in the last three weeks. And just this afternoon, uh, met with the veterans group who had a lot of good input on, uh, programs that could potentially, uh, address veterans' needs. So the outreach, uh, we have continued with. Uh, one thing you'll see in your packet tonight, uh, we didn't want to be a surprise to council that, uh, there is a draft of the housing element that's going to be published later this month. We wanted to give you a sense of the look and feel of what that looks like. One of your attachments is just the outline of the draft housing element and what's included. Uh, these are the, the key, uh, table of contents sections in the document. Uh, and again, based on, uh, your feedback tonight and what we've already talked about with housing opportunity sites, uh, that'll be the substantive, uh, issues that are addressed in the, the housing element. Next. So tonight, uh, I, I see this as a continuing funnel. Last time you looked at high-level, um, programs, you prioritize them, high, medium, low. What's more important to start with early? What's less important? Uh, we've taken that direction. We're going to feed it, give it back to you tonight to make sure we got it right. And a few of the key housing policies and programs, we're going to give you some more ideas and, and details on where we think Campbell could go in terms of its focus on how to craft those policies and programs. And again, based on your direction tonight, uh, our next task will be to put this in the draft housing element for publication. Next. And again, just our analytical process, um, so you know, uh, what's feeding into this discussion. We did review our existing housing element, what was working, what was not working. Um, programs that are working, of course, we're recommending to continuing. We've done a lot of a deep dive into the unique, uh, needs of the housing needs of Campbell, the, the data, the demographics. Uh, we've done extensive community stakeholder outreach and, and based on their input and feedback, brought that in. All those three components together, uh, lead to the recommended policies and programs that you have before you tonight. Next. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brittany from M Group, and she's going to go ahead and summarize, uh, what, um, the feedback we had from you, uh, at the last meeting on the high, medium, low priorities. Uh, and also talk a bit about, uh, the, but later on, we'll talk a bit about what the planning commission, uh, recommended. Do I have disclosure on the planning commission? Two things, uh, planning commission that last Wednesday uh, was a little tight to get, uh, the recommendations out, uh, right into the staff report. So we've two approaches to this. One, you do have a desk item. It's a very quick summary of the high-level feedback they had on the items, and you have that before you. Also, as we present each of the key policies and programs, we'll also, um, as part of the presentation, um, state what the planning commission thoughts and recommendations are on each of those policies and programs. So you both had the desk item, and we'll embed the, um, the recommendations into the presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Brittany.
Hey, thank you, uh, Director Eastwood. How's the volume there? Okay, great. I am Brittany Bendix. I am-
Can you do a little louder?
Sure. I'm Brittany Bendix, Principal Planner with M Group. I'll give a general summary of the city council's feedback received on April twentieth, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions on that feedback before we jump into a more detailed policy discussion. After the housing element team presented potential policies and programs for the housing element to the planning commission on April twelfth, the same package of options was presented to the council for consideration at a special meeting on April twentieth. In general, the city council, planning commission, and planning staff had consensus on seventeen of the twenty-five items. However, there were some changes, and the purpose of this slide is really to highlight the changes that track in your staff report. There were three items removed. One F, which would have required deed restrictions on ADUs. The general consensus from the planning commission and city council was that such a policy can inhibit ADU development and present, uh, present implementation and monitoring challenges. Staff agreed and removed this item. Number two A, which would have prioritized a rent control requirement that exceeds the state's new laws, was also removed. However, I've kept an asterisk here because staff is proposing a rent control ordinance specific to units that are below market rate, what we call BMRs, that I will discuss further tonight. And then five C, which would craft incentives to construct ADUs dedicated to individuals with special needs. We also removed that item. Concerns here echoed the challenges with deed restriction requirements on ADUs that we heard on item one S. We did add an item. Item one K was added at the recommendation of Councilmember Lopez with the intent that the city strategically interfaced with the state legislature, and the goal of it being more proactive in responding to the state housing legislation. And then there were eight items that we elevated in prior, priority based on the feedback from council. These include one G, publishing pre-approved ADU plans that went from medium to high. One J, developing a missing middle ordinance that was also elevated to high. Preservation of a mobile home park, uh, that went from low to high. Three B and C, which addresses permit streamlining and impact fee adjustments for affordable projects. Uh, this elevated from low to high, but only for aspects of the programming that would relate to implementation of an affordable housing overlay zone. Four A and B, which are the two resilient housing policies. These were elevated from low to high to recognize the work that's occurring specific to the objective standards update, the pursuit of a climate action plan, and anticipation of new reach codes pending the building code update. And finally, five F, which applies to the city's provision of multilingual information on housing programs. This was elevated to a higher priority to, um, although staff recognizes that this would be an ongoing effort. At this point, I'll pause briefly if there are any questions from the council specific to the feedback related in the staff report. If not, I can move on.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Gibbons?
So, thank you. Uh, Brittany, would you put the slide back? Uh, so I can just read rid of them. Um, so I appreciate the council had a discussion, but I wanted to just clarify. On the, uh, rent control ordinance, uh, the conversation, um, I think, didn't really come to a good, a clear conclusion, and I just wanted to revalidate. Uh, staff has some recommendations in the report, as Brittany indicated, related to our BMR units. But I wanted to make sure the council understood that right now we use, um, uh, what's the name of the group? Thank you. Uh, yeah, and, um, they, the, uh, council subcommittee are on, uh, our committee, the, the city's committee on, on rent issues hasn't, doesn't have members and hasn't been functioning in years because the process that we have in place with Project Sentinel is, has no, nothing to make it work. And I wanted to make sure that we're comfortable that, um, when we get to the rent control dis- discussion put by staff, um, that we sure that we want to have, we have absolutely no protections for rent control, um, uh, of our residents, and I just want to make sure that we understand that. And I don't, I don't think that was clear at the end of the last discussion. And the one K strategically interfaced with state legislature. I appreciate that that was from Councilmember Lopez, but I don't think the whole council discussed that. And, um, we already have a, a subcommittee that does legislation. So I'm not sure that really belongs in here. I'd like to have a better sense of why we put it in here. I know we want to bolster the content, but I didn't, I, it, I just think that it seems to be contrary to the, the process that the council already has with a subcommittee on legislative. And, um, another question I had was on one G, pre-approved ADUs. Somebody can submit any ADU they want. There's just pre-approved, and that, that I didn't think was clear, um, in the language. And the missing middle ordinance only applies to SB ten properties? Was that the intent?
The, yes, the, the missing middle ordinance would be an SB ten ordinance. That's correct.
Okay, I'm not sure it solves the missing middle issue, but okay. Okay, those were my main, main questions.
Councilmember Lopez? Councilwoman Landry, no questions? So, uh, just, uh, couple, um, on, to be, I ju- I just don't remember. We took it, we took a poll on that. I remember sta- this is mobile homes. I remember that staff had said there were two parks. One was resident-owned, so it wasn't an issue. The other one has, has historically done a contract, and the city has peripherally been, been involved, but it works. Was, was there, just remind, was there three that wanted to elevate this? I just don't remember it. Um, I was not one of them. It affects one park, and the, and that park process I thought was working, but-
Ye- yes, we, we had a majority of the council seem to reflect an interest in elevating it.
Okay, then my other question is, if you can confirm, uh, one of the two issues just recently brought up to rent control. I am interested in discussing the, the asterisk, but before we get to that, the fact that we, that we deprioritize that and that we did prioritize, I believe, the strategic interface with legislature. Can you confirm then, uh, Robert, Stephen, that those were also by a vote of three or more?
Confirm on the first. On the second, not, uh, it was the, the strategic interface. It was proposed by Councilmember Lopez. We didn't hear objections to it. It was a new idea. If tonight you'd like to, to get to a consensus vote on that, you could. I didn't-
So the right, range role was a three vote?
Correct.
Three or four, I don't remember what it was, but we didn't vote. I don't, I thought we did. We didn't vote on that? I thought, I thought-
You weren't taking affirmative votes? We were taking scorecarding. Uh, but we had three council, at least three council members on the rent control, um, not favorable of, of keeping that where it was. On the-
When I say vote, we went down one by one and said yes or no. We did, we did vote, and it's not a, it's not like a motion vote, but it was a vote.
I'll, I'll say it this way. You had, you had three council members that affirmatively put in the record they were against the rent control.
Right, but we didn't do that for the strategic?
No, you did not.
Okay, we can do that tonight, then, as needed. Okay, I thought we did. Thank you. That's all I had. Brittany?
Shall I move on?
Go on.
So there are currently five objectives that frame the policies and programs for the six-cycle housing element. Over the past several weeks, we've worked with the public, planning commission, and city council to consider what these objectives should address and the policies and programs to facilitate their success. The five objectives are, one, to improve housing affordability in Campbell and encourage the production of affordable housing. Two, to preserve existing housing and affordable housing stock. Three, to remove government constraints to housing. Four, to provide resilient housing policies. And five, to affirmatively further fair housing and address special needs. Tonight, we will look at policies specific to objectives one, three, and five.
Excuse me, Paul, um, go back one slide, please. It says organized into five goals, but it's actually five objectives, the way the outline is listed. Says objectives.
That's correct. Right.
Just says goals.
Uh, we've interchanged the two concepts, but you've picked up on the, the wording change. Um, it means objectives. You are correct. Okay, go ahead, Brittany.
So while the focus of, of previous presentations has been crafting policy and program language that will meet the city's goals, the expectation of the state is that Campbell's Plan for Housing will express these efforts with defined targets, responsible parties, funding sources, and a timeframe for anticipated completion. The example provided here is for a program that provides pre-approved ADU plans. It's specifically taken from program one H one F in table A one on page thirty of your packet. You'll see the table includes specific programming language in the first column and indicates that there isn't any existing text from the fifth-cycle housing element in the second column. It then identifies the implementing action as publishing pre-approved plans on the website with the targets of providing at least five plan sets, of which two would be ADA compliant or addressing your housing needs. And then the table also indicates the channels with this information, uh, by which this information would be shared. The table also lists the city's housing division and the Santa Clara County Housing Collaborative as the two responsible parties that will achieve this effort by the end of December twenty-twenty-six with funding from the community development budget. More broadly speaking, staff understands that the state will also expect details on efforts to affirmatively furthering fair housing, indicating how programs and policies will achieve these goals. This will be covered in chapter four of the housing element, which requires identification and prioritization of contributing factors to AFFH issues. We've included that definition, that, that definition here. A contributing factor is a factor that creates, contributes to, perpetuates, or increases the severity of one or more fair housing issues. Additionally, we must include actions to mitigate contributing factors, which must be specific with timelines, discrete steps, and measurable outcomes to have a beneficial impact during the planning period. In the prior example of pre-approved ADU plans, I noted, uh, the policy table included in your packet is table A one and starts on page twenty-eight. This is a draft table, but it reflects the full framework of information required by the state. It includes the policies that we've discussed here previously and that we've addressed in the staff report, as well as new policies and programs to bolster AFFH efforts. So with that, we'll move on to discussing some of the policies in greater depth, starting with those that improve housing and affordability in Campbell. To help frame the impact of policies we've been discussing, staff prepared this table that gives an estimate, an estimation of the total number of BMR units as a range that could be expected as a result of various housing programs listed in table A one. For example, construction of onsite BMR housing units in the inclusionary housing program would result in five hundred up to seven hundred and fifty units. Through in Lufy's, the program could provide up to seventy units. Commercial linkage, commercial linkage fees up to twenty units. The Affordable Housing Overlay, or AHAS, could result in up to three hundred and seventy. ADU programs on top of the baseline amount anticipated could be up to two hundred. The two efforts under consideration for using city-owned land would garner up to three hundred. And other programs are estimated to gain up to another one hundred and fifty units. So in total, the programs included in table A one would result in one thousand two hundred and ninety units up to one thousand eight hundred and sixty units, where the city's arena target is one thousand six hundred and eighty-five. Of course, this is an estimate based on certain assumptions. Raising fees or shifting incentives could alter anticipated production. And so the details of these programs, especially those that generate the majority of units, such, such as the inclusionary ordinance, the AHAS, and the use of city-owned land are very important. Additionally, the analysis illustrates why a combination of programs and policies is necessary to achieve Campbell's overall targets.
Brittany, you know, pause for one second. Councilmember, you had something not related to a specific-
Uh, I think, I think, uh, this is broad. I, what I was trying to understand is in the purpose of the meeting tonight. Two things. This table, for example, I believe is based on the opportunity maps that staff has- I believe is based on the opportunity maps that staff has put together so far. And if, am I correct in that?
Good question. So this table, it, it's new and, and just to underline the purpose of it, it's a thought process to say. We not only have to develop units, we have to develop affordable units and you have to have programs that do that. And the thought is, you know, if we did all our programs, what, what it produced. I just want to make sure that the purpose of the table is clear for the council. And there's a range because there's tons of caveats to go with this. I'd say some of these are linked to. That and some of these aren't. So for example, the inclusionary housing ordinance. Presumes that we would build, I think upward of five thousand units. Which presumes we've zoned housing opportunity sites at this moment somewhere in that range. Some of these, some of these are different, commercial linkage fees, of course, goes to commercial development that has nothing to do with it and some. Like ADU programs wouldn't be codependent upon housing opportunity site. So it, so it is a mix.
Reason I was asking for that clarity is council has not settled on the opportunity sites. Council has not settled on the density of the opportunity sites. And it's, I just want to make it clear that you're asking us to make policy. Decisions. When we don't have that information and when we get to that phase, things may change. We haven't settled on a final number. We haven't done any of that. So I just wanted to be clear. That we all understand this is all up in the air. It's, it's where we are now and we're doing our best to get where we want to go.
Yeah, understood. I mean, the council was clear that the initial selection of housing opportunity sites was to go into IR. It would inform you more on the environmental impacts and you would have options towards the end of everyone to land and there was. Feedback from several council members that that would be little down to a, a smaller number. Again, the purpose of this tonight is, is to show, I'll just say this, it's very hard to build affordable housing units. You need to put a lot of programs in and we had, from staff's perspective, when we laid out all these programs to you. We didn't want you to think that was just happening in a vacuum, that these programs should result in units. And so we actually went through the thought process of thinking, well, well, how many units could we actually get? So we wanted to have mean to you as you go through these programs that there could be a range of units come out, come out of it. That's, that's the purpose of this table.
And, and, and also the other things are going to change too. We don't know what the number, the final, you know, opportu- full numbers are going to be. We don't know if there's going to be any city-owned sites at all, so that would come out. So you got to start somewhere.
That's correct. Yeah, this, this is to inform you at a conceptual stage generally how. Each of these different programs you consider could result in units.
But any program could change or disappear or.
And you could, you know, based on where, yes, there's a lot of factors and based on the, the type of program, it could land at a higher level or a lower level. Based on the details.
Okay, and so I appreciate that. And my, my second question is. When you say the purpose of the meeting tonight, you're going to get our feedback. There was a great deal of information in this packet. I'm not sure we will be able to go through every single item that's in the packet. You're not expecting us or do you need us to go through every item in the packet?
Well, I'll say it this way, staff, there, there is a lot of information in there. A lot of it provides the detail that we believe that, based on what we know of housing community development, what they're expecting. So we've put that detail on the table as we presented it to you as we presented, presented to the commission. We haven't, we've called out for your discussion, what we think are the most, most, more, more noteworthy programs to which you've had discussion on and believe in the past. That being said, if you believe beyond the, generally the five topic areas that we presented tonight, that you think there's other areas in the tables you'd like to discuss. Were available to it, but it wasn't staff's expectation that you would go through each and every line of that, of those tables.
And then if, if I apologize for, but I think it's important that we all understand. So once you, we get your feedback, you do whatever you're going to do, you're going to publish it for the public. And then what happens? Are you going to then assimilate the public input and does council review it again and, and respond to the public? How, how, I couldn't understand the process of getting the public input and then having council finalize what you're going to submit to HCD.
Yeah, it's a good question. At this point, that intermittent early feedback loop is not in the schedule. It's been our intent to, to take all the feedback you've given us on housing opportunity sites, on the policy and programs, put it in the draft document. That's going out in May. So, so you've, you've given substantive feedback on, on what's in that document. It will go out for public review for thirty days. Public review will come in. We're, we're required to respond to those public comments and then give it to, to housing community development. We haven't. I'd say, I'd say this, staff's thinking is we haven't put in a, a check-in point based on those. What's coming from the public. I, I think based that you've given your feedback into the draft document, if for some reason. I'm trying to think this out. If for some reason we get a lot of public input that would cause us to pivot in, in a significant way, we would have to come back to you.
I appreciate that clarity because we usually have a closure process. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question, I mean, we can get back.
Yes, quick.
Please.
Is this chart going to be published in these documents to the community, this specific chart?
No, it's not. Yeah, we, we are sort of on the table with this. It's sort of a, if you present this. Yeah, you might get into the details and we didn't want you to get into the details because there's a lot of caveats in this. This was wholly just an initial thought process on where these programs could go, but we're not putting this in the. In the draft document. It's just for informational purposes for the council.
I do not think this should be published at all. Because if you take out the city-owned land, you're below the number with arena. So that's why I asked.
Thank you. Brittany?
So to Rob's point, we will be looking at some of these programs a little bit more closely. The first one we wanted to start with was the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, which is included in table A one. As program H one C on page twenty nine of your packet. The concept here is to give affordable housing developers a more attractive option than the state's density bonus law. By incentivizing development to stay within the seventy-five foot height limit and be consistent with Campbell's local priorities. In order to out-compete the development package offered by the state's density bonus program. Campbell can, could consider designing a package that grants everything offered by the state except the height bonus. But then also includes increasing the density bonus to a higher percentage. And providing fee waivers, city-funded frontage improvements and ministerial review. All of those would be carrots that the state does not currently offer. Another key angle of the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone is ensuring that Campbell's getting the housing takes that it needs while. Retaining some levels of local control. So with this in mind, the program could be, uh, could be crafted to incentivize development. That includes upwards fifty to a hundred percent of units as affordable. Or units that are dedicated to, to groups with special needs in Campbell. This would also help Campbell ensure that it's getting the right units. Additionally, certain incentives like the density bonus I just mentioned on the previous slide. Could be applied as a means to encourage development in specific locations. Especially if there's a sense that one location versus another could better accommodate a greater density. And finally, just reiterating that we've heard a clear desire to keep the voter-approved seventy-five foot height limit. And that this program could really be designed to address that as a local priority. So for added context and discussion, we've included this map of potential affordable housing. Of the potential affordable housing overlay zone, which was included in the staff report and is available on packet page ten. It identifies sites that staff recommends for inclusion in that zone. Green sites are those that staff recommends be included at a higher priority level, while yellow sites would be a secondary priority. While not showing up on this map, as in, well, although these. Sorry, the planning commission at their May fourth meeting did indicate an interest in looking at the home church in San Tomas Plaza sites. Although they're not included on this map in front of you. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Asher Cohn, who can address the remaining policy and program considerations.
Great, thank you so much, Brittany. Good evening, council members. My name is Asher Cohn. I'm an associate planner with M Group. And the next program we'll look at is establishing maximum average unit size requirements for developments of a certain size.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure thing. So, good evening, council members. Name's Asher Cohn. We're gonna. Start up with the maximum average unit size requirement developments for developments for a certain size. This is listed as program H one D in table one A, which you can find on the bottom of page thirty, top of page thirty-one in your packet. Given the support for this approach by both the planning commission and city council. Staff is recommending consideration of a maximum, maximum average unit size of one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. For projects with a density over forty-five dwelling units per acre. The intent of this program would be to increase the production of smaller units, which are inherently affordable by design. The planning commission also encouraged consideration of a bedroom mix requirement. Which require housing developments provide a certain percentage of units based on the number of bedrooms. Additionally, based on previous discussions with council, we also want to note this would not promote or inhibit rental housing models like SROs. That would need to be pursued as a separate policy or program if it's desired by council. And finally, one last though, this is not a program that is intended to control massing or the bulk of buildings. Those fiscal parameters be crafted separately as part of the objective standards. Next slide, please. For additional context, we've included the St. Anton apartment building as a case study. This project included a bedroom mix of six studio units, eighty-three one bedroom units. Thirty-two two bedroom units, six three bedroom units and fifteen four bedroom units. As you can see, the units range from four hundred and forty-one square feet to one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six square feet. The average unit size of this development was just over a thousand square feet, which is well below the maximum size we're proposing of one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Another policy I want to draw your attention to is rent control, but for below market rate or BMR units. As addressed in the staff report, as staff removed the rent control policy consideration, given the consensus from planning commission and the city council not to exceed. State standards. While staff is in agreement with this approach, it became evident recently that the state law does not cap yearly rent increases to low market rate units. So staff is recommending that the city adopt a policy that takes the state's general rent control protections and extends them to BMR units in Campbell. This would protect.
And if I may ask you, I just want to jump in on this one, just to provide a little bit more history and context. So this is the second time this item is kind of coming before the council. We flagged this one with that red asterix earlier, as you remember in the presentation, because the, both the planning commission and council had identified that this item. That rent control is not supported as we'd originally presented it. And as a reminder, the, the intent of our original rent control provisions. Were seeking to expand the protections of AB fourteen eighty-two to households, pretty much all households, including market rate households. From operating like a month-to-month basis all the way up to a year, which, which that, which AB fourteen eighty-two does not currently protect. So the reason why this is coming up, so following council's direction and planning commission's direction. We, we as staff, we were alerted by house keys. As well as a number of tenants within our below-market rate housing program, I think eight in total. That they were receiving rent increase notices of between twenty and forty-two percent, I believe. And a- as response, we were looking over AB fourteen eighty-two because our assumptions were that it would provide the same types of safeguards and protections. Unilaterally across market rate and below-market rate households. But in our review of the law, it appears below-market rate units or BMRs are not protected by AB fourteen eighty-two. And so our, we, our changes to this program, so it's practically, we're, we're, we're modifying, we're using the same header. But pretty much all the content of the rent control provisions we've gutted. And restructured applies exclusively to below-market rate households within the city's below-market rate program. And the idea here would be to provide the exact same protections afforded to all market rate households. Of AB fourteen eighty-two to programs, to units within our program. And Asher, go ahead and advance to the next slide. And so what this looks like in a program perspective, it would be, we would be looking to establish very limited rent control. Only again to below-market rate households, households within the city's program. In order to cap the yearly rent increases to units to, to no more than five percent. Plus the percent change in the CPI or ten percent, whichever, whichever is lower. That's modeled exactly to match the provisions of AB fourteen eighty-two. So that, that's kind of our new modified and very highly focused rent control. Provisions we're suggesting. And although we're only seeing this right now in one apartment, community complex within our community. As staff were concerned that a number of communities might have held back their rent in response to COVID nineteen. And as a result, this could be something which we see occur in other communities in our, in our, in our city in the coming years. So there's at least one community which has been non-responsive to our requests about their, their status of rent control, rent increases. So there's one totally non-responsive apartment community and one which we know is already doing this. Others have not yet decided what their rent increases will be. And so we're thinking that this would be a program which could help provide those safeguards specifically exactly. Now to bring up a point that was raised by one of our other council member Gibbons, the city does have Project Sentinel. And we do have a kind of a defunct rental fact-finding committee at this time, which is not staffed. It's not, um, there's no members on the board, but those are other tools which we could also evaluate. At making, kind of building a more robust rent control program. So I just wanted to offer those on the table as well.
Great, thanks so much for that, Stephen. Really appreciate it. And I'll pick the time back up with reducing government constraints. The next slide. A key constraint that has come up in this process are the city's parking standards.
Can you lean in maybe a little closer or speak up?
Yeah, sure. No, thank you. So a key constraint that has come up in this process are the city's parking standards. And while staff is supportive of reducing parking standards, we've heard concerns about what that means and how it would look in a policy. It's program H three A in table A one, which is on pages thirty-six to thirty-seven of your packet. It identifies recommended code, code updates, including. Reducing the parking lot, parking requirements near transit, providing incentives for reduced parking in the affordable housing overlay zone. Including a minor reduction of parking requirements citywide to require no more than two parking spaces per unit. Remove guest parking requirements and allow parking to be unbundled from residential units. On that last item, unbundled parking, I want to get a little deeper so I can clarify what we mean by that. Bundled parking means that parking stalls are included with a rented unit. You rent an apartment and your rent is also going towards parking for your car or your cars. Unbundled means that stalls are rented separately from units. So one's rent may be lower, but you have to pay in addition for a parking spot. This could incentivize car-free or car-light living and studies have identified that unbundled parking is a strong VMT reduction measure. And that it can really reduce greenhouse gas emissions. However, unbundled parking can also mean that people simply choose to park across the street and walk to their apartment complex. Staff's recommendation is a hybrid approach where a portion of stalls are set aside to be included in rent, but additional ones are separate. So you may get one parking stall with a unit and you can pay more to rent additional stall from the pool of available parking. It's also worth considering that unbundled parking may not make sense as citywide program, but only for residential developments. That are somewhat removed from existing residential areas where many people are already taking advantage of on-street parking. The next and final series of slides addresses policies and programs that staff has recommended with AFFH requirements in mind. These programs specifically relate to how Campbell can address special needs groups that are identified by the state. These are seniors, people with disabilities, including developmental disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, large families. And female-headed households and farm workers. However, note there are no identified farmer or families currently living in Campbell. Sorry. And before we dive in, just a couple of reminders. First, the special needs groups overlap and that's okay. One policy can serve multiple groups and our purpose tonight is to highlight the groups most served. That way we can ensure that needs are being met. So out there are a lot of programs, we're using these next several slides, it is illustrate a few. Second. Sorry, draft policy programs are also designed to mitigate these contributing factors and not just provide for certain groups. Next slide, please. Thank you. For seniors, we'd like to highlight programs H two K, H five Q, H five W and H five Y. Collectively, these programs look to help fund senior home maintenance, provide physically accessible units. Include support services in larger housing projects and provide renter support. For people with disabilities, including developmental disabilities, we've highlighted programs H five I. H five P, H five R or an H five W. These programs rely on coordination with regional agencies and affordable housing providers to, to support housing and services. Additionally, they support the construction of accessible housing for identity bonuses for projects with onsite staff housing. And as I said previously, there are other programs. We know there's a lot of support for the successful pre-approved ADU. And as I said previously, there are other programs. We know there's a lot of support for the successful pre-approved AU program, and that is in the table and still one that we're definitely prioritizing. For people experiencing homelessness, we're highlighting programs H five H, H five O, H five R, and H five U. These programs serve to ensure that people experiencing homelessness have support services in the community, as well as in larger housing developments, have access to foreclosure prevention information, and access to temporary shelter facilities. For large families, we have highlighted programs that include H two D, H two I, H five V, and H five Y. Collectively, these programs focus on collecting and distributing information to protect renters informed of their rights to facilitate new housing opportunities through workforce housing and density bonus programs. The last issue I'll highlight tonight is that of outreach. This is because a number of public-facing programs have outreach as a target element. And given this overlap, outreach for housing programs deserves special attention. As currently proposed, many programs indicate they'll rely on at least three information channels, including the city's website, social media, local press, council, Almond's utility mailers. Additionally, programs requiring cooperation with landlords rely on information sent to the business license renewal process. Feedback from planning commission also included policy language that require know-your-rights flyers to be provided at certain events. At this point, we've concluded the bulk of the presentation. We'd like to turn it back to council for questions before moving on to public comment. Once public comment is closed, we'll then turn to council for discussion feedback. We have a list to suggest topics to facilitate that as necessary. Once that portion of the night is concluded, we'll share a couple more slides and what to expect moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go to public comments, see if there's any question just on, on just what was presented. Now we'll get into discussion afterwards, but let's hear public comment before we do discussion. Counselor Gibbons?
Yeah, so this, this is why I was asking before, because I have a lot of questions. So I, I will try and be thoughtful. One, one question is, there's a statement here that says on one, let me get it, the paragraph of one, number one A, and it references units by income level, i.e. fifty percent low and fifty percent moderate. I, I, it's mentioned several times in the document. I was trying to understand what we were trying to achieve here. I thought we had a policy that said any below-market-rate units would be percentage-wise by arena numbers. And I'm not clear if you're trying to change that or what you're, what you're trying to achieve with what I'm reading is fifty-fifty.
So I think you're referring back to the initial staff recommendation. We're saying clarify the percentage of restricted units by income level, be i.e. fifty-fifty percent. That's getting at, we, we do have, so within our city, the city's inclusionary ordinance, we have two provisions, one that speaks to ownership units or for-sale units, and one that applies to rental units.
The rent just learned.
Right, yeah. So within the rental portion, it speaks to more specific allocations, saying a certain percentage must be like low and et cetera. In the for-sale component or the ownership unit program, it just says shall be comprised of a percentage, like it shall include low and moderate households without specifying the exact percentage makeup. Now, we did hear prior council feedback that we should be trying to allocate these units across arena allocation, so it's commensurate with those figures. However, in practice, it might be difficult to achieve, especially in lower unit projects, where you don't have a large enough mix to justify that allocation in the program. So we're looking at using these other tools, like the fee-out program, where individuals, if you're, have a project below, say, I think it was five units is what we, where we landed on it, or between five and seven could pay out a fee that could help us provide additional low-income households in our community through providing gap financing, filling in the gap between those low-income households. So that'd be a way that we could help generate units and allocate them directly towards arena allocation without having a policy so specific as saying, you know, twenty-eight-three, twenty-eight-point-three percent shall go towards very low, thirty-three percent shall go towards low.
So, so thank you. That helps a little bit, but would, would it not be better to not have so many moving parts? Would it not be better to say, and I know it's, it's blended all the way throughout various sections here, which is why I'm highlighting it now, would it not be better? And we clearly have a higher need for, for the moderate and low and low-low. So would it not be better to say that it's the same for rent and it's the same for, for sale? What, what are the pros and cons of having a different standard for those two? And I would think we might want to just do something as simple as fifty, I'm just saying fifty percent of all the affordable units in a project must be low and low-low. And then the remaining can be whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm looking for simplicity here. And then I understood that, so that, that's kind of question number one, what's the fifty-fifty about and how we divvy it up? The second related one is we go back to fifteen percent. We had talked about twenty percent. And the law makes this, makes it twenty percent using them going forward. So what are the pros and cons of going to twenty percent inclusionary? Because we didn't really talk about that. And the third one is what you are now proposing is to go from, we, what we currently have is ten. And there is some, I have to confess, I never read it about projects from seven to five to seven and how we want to handle those. So to me, those are kind of three very specific areas, and I was looking for simplicity through them. What it's worth.
I'll, I'll take the question part of that, because I know some of its feedback. So your question was, what's the pros and cons of going to twenty percent? I, I think we found if the percentage rate is too high, it would be then harder for the market rate developer to, to produce the, the product. And I've seen some sensitivity from HCD and others that if it is too high, you're actually getting in the way of housing production. So there's a, it's a sort of a Goldilocks zone of having a high enough to give more affordable units, but not so high that's preventative to the marketplace. Uh, we have some, there's nexus studies that have been done recently that I haven't seen many at twenty percent. I mean, just, just comparative for other jurisdictions, most land up in the high teens. I'd say all of this should be, would be caveated by the further nexus study that is done. We don't have to make hard decisions today, preempting our attorney having to make that statement. So the direction today is should we do affordable housing adjustments? The answer is yes. Do we have initial thoughts on where we could go? Yes, once we get into it, we'll have a nexus study will lay out clear parameters of where Campbell can go. So that answers the question.
So that goes to, we're leaving it at ten, or did you want to go down to seven?
Oh, sorry, the second part. So, so many jurisdictions, so Campbell's today is it's, it's one bar. You enter at ten, you provide the units with a small fee-out program. Many jurisdictions have a lower bar where you enter at three or five. And until you get to a whole unit, which under fifteen percent is seven, seven times fifteen gives you one whole unit, you're paying a fee because you can't produce a fraction of a unit. That's, that's not atypical with many programs. So staff is advocating to lower the bar, subject to a nexus study, down to three or five, three up, three or five up to seven. You would come to the program, pay fees only. We'd use those fees to put into affordable housing development. Once you get to seven, you would be, you would start to produce units.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity. So I'm just to be sure, I'm supportive of looking for what staff is saying of moving the number from ten to seven, doing, staying at the fifteen percent, and doing an in-lu fee from three to five, right, or five to seven, five to seven.
We're getting into discussion though.
Okay.
But let, let's hold that, we'll get there.
Sorry, okay. All right. The next topic is the unit, affordable housing applied to non-residential residential development. Okay, I'll let that go because that's a comment. That's a comment. Can can you comment on, on, one of the options is to reduce permit fees? How can we reduce permit fees in a way that allows us to cost recovery? I didn't see the phrase cost recovery in the discussion of permit fees reductions.
So in the AHOS, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, we have a discussion of potentially reducing or eliminating waiving city planning review fees, building permit fees. Uh, there's even a possibility that we introduced of providing frontage improvements. All of those would need to be studied. They would need to be studied, the exact cost of those will need to return with, to the council. So what a lot of these policies are trying to do is they're not trying to set up the exact specific provision at this time. It's establishing framework that this is something which we, as a community, think is worthy of further analysis and study. So kind of all going, going back to our prior discussion point on the inclusionary ordinance, we don't need to exactly distribute, indicate the exact distribution of units or percentages, say, tonight or at this meeting, or even necessarily as part of the housing element. A, a good policy is like the one you'd suggested where you have a provision, you say the rental and the ownership units shall match in terms of their percentage, but leaving it up to us to come back at a later date in time to stipulate the exact percentage. The same general philosophy is applying here, where we're saying that impact fees would be looking at options of reducing or even waiving them, but without stipulating exactly how much we could do. That's why the, the idea of reducing it is being introduced as opposed to exclusively waiving it.
So I'm maybe taking what, as I often do, taking what's here very seriously. I am reading this as a significant written statement of the intent. And I'm.
I'll, I'll help answer the question. There would be a fiscal impact. So you'd be trading off a fiscal impact for more affordable units. That, that's the trade-off. So there would be a fiscal impact.
And, and I, I will tie that back, back into a comment that I, I sent staff earlier. All right. Uh, one quick comment is, um, under senior special user groups, we should add in the veterans. You mentioned that you had your meeting today on the veterans. Okay. All right, I'll, I'll try and keep, if I have other questions, I'll do during discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez?
I have one question on table A one, the draft table. Is this an appropriate time for that?
Yeah, let's ask what, let's. Let's ask questions now, and then we'll go into discussion after the public.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my question for staff is just the climate action plan, packet page thirty-nine under goal four. Where are we getting the twenty-twenty-seven date for that? Like, Kim is a bit of a surprise to me.
And Ash, if you're, or Brittany, if you're maintaining the presentation, if you want to stop sharing so I can take over, so I can share the, the specific spot. And council member Lopez, if you could repeat the location?
It is packet page thirty-nine. I, I didn't see which page of the PDF it is.
In the program letter, I apologize.
I found it. It's, it's H four D, it's the middle of page thirty-nine. And the question was, where is the twenty-twenty-seven number coming from? I think we picked that to align, we have high, medium, low, and we picked that to align with the medium. That being said, separately, and it's on the work plan that we'll come back to in the budget, it's our plan after the general plan housing element is adopted next year to shift our priorities to start working with climate action plan. I would hope it would not take four years to get it done, but I, I think the number you're seeing on the screen aligns with that medium priority that we identified earlier.
All right, that makes sense. Uh, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, um. So quite a lot of these things that were presented talk about the seventy-five-foot height limit. And I think we were on a consensus in here that that is something that the voter, we need to hear from the voters on the seventy-five-foot limit. And so I'm curious, how, how can that be approached? Because is that something we want to put on the ballot? This is looking at me with.
Can I maybe clarify? I think, Rob, were you talking about situations where, where the project itself will qualify for higher than seventy-five under certain state circumstances? And in that case, it's not, it's out of our hands. But versus the question I think is, are we willing to, are we seeking a way to raise it for everybody? Is it?
Answered three ways. One is disclosure under state density bonus law. A developer using those provisions may abridge the height limit, state, statement of fact, looking at the attorney. Two, knowing the sensitivity of the council of going past the seventy-five-foot height limit in our affordable housing overlay zone, we've put in an approach that disincentivizes developers from doing that, and we could talk more about that. And then, and then the third part of the question was. Yeah, sorry. Just, just those two parts.
Well, the third part would be changing the, the height probably, but, but, but in the first two examples, you said, statement of fact, I mean, it, it's situations in which we don't control it. So we don't control it in your number one scenario. In number two scenario, we don't control it, but we're trying to discourage it. The number three scenario is what Councilman Landry raised, which would be is council, council did not express an interest in doing something on their own or even going to the voters, but we were acknowledging that there are circumstances in which projects that come forward by state law can exceed it without our, without our approval.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so.
That's. So I, I guess it could be a comment versus a question, but I find that the parcels between the Prune Yard and Southwest Expressway in Bascom are, to me, okay to go above the seventy-five feet. And so my question is, where is that in the conversation? Because this, we talked about going over seventy-five feet should be something that voters should, we should hear from the community and the voters. But I expressly commented on those specific parcels, which pretty much are the, all of the green sites. And we could go higher, we didn't get more of this density. So is that any part of this conversation?
I, I guess I'd recommend pulling the comment and having a part of the affordable housing opportunity zone discussion. We can come back on that during council discussion.
Other questions? Vice Mayor Biden?
Um, I had a question about the, a couple of questions actually, on the rent control for the BMR units. Is that, are you looking at adopting a separate ordinance? Or is that a policy decision that's going to, in language, add it to the below-market policy that we have currently? Is that, has that been bought out or?
It would be adopted by ordinance, but I imagine as part of our below-market-rate program guide, rental guide, we'd absolutely want to add a reference to it so that program participants are aware.
Okay, but it would require an ordinance, an ordinance to.
Correct.
Okay. And then I just had a question. Um, I talked to the city manager today about the nexus study and we, um, I, I didn't get an answer back, but I was just curious about the nexus study and it's in the city's work plan to, to be doing a user fee study and in, in the next fiscal year. And can this nexus study be bundled into that user fee study with a, a separate category to specifically look at a nexus study for, for the user fees, or is it better or more productive? Or more, more recommended to do a separate user fee for, for, for the inclusionary fees?
The only thing I'm more welcome, the attorney and city manager's way, and I know on the, in nexus fees for this, it's a very select type of study, and you need a very unique type of consultant to do it. And those might be different from the, the outside contract support we use for the normal user fees. Type, timing might like specifically, but I just know that the, the methodology that you go about, these are very unique.
I, I was just hoping to achieve some type of economy and scale, you know, tagging on to the other, other studies. Thank you.
Okay, we're just one question, following up the, the rent control for BMR. So that's a proposal. That could mean that council agrees a hundred percent with.
That could mean that council agrees a hundred percent with that disagrees a hundred percent, or in discussion, we might have some other, some other parameters. It's a fluid, so there's no magic, other than the fact you came up and said. Let's make it the same. But other than the consistency, there's no, there's no reason that it has to be. Those numbers should council want to, to even adopt it.
Right. And to be clear, you did not discuss this last meeting. So this is a new topic and we'd.
But your recommendation was, my understanding was because. It's a starting point at least to say this is consistent with, with the market rate plan. So let's start at the same position. Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, let's. Open up for a public comment, and then after that, we'll bring it back to council for a discussion. I know we have some people online, but before we do that, do you have anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak on this? See, none. So, Madam Clerk, who do we have? I'm looking here online. We have a few attendees.
Yes, I have one signed up speaker in advance. If you'd like to take that one first, and then I see some hands popping in. So Mr. Shawn Mendelson, he was our first.
Shawn, we'll take you first. Are you there, Shawn?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Perfectly. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, guys. Good to see you again. A friendly neighborhood climate activist coming in here on your housing meeting. We have such an opportunity here. By the way, how much time do I have? Is this the same two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay, we have such an opportunity here to combat the present climate emergency. As we transition to a climate safe planet, it's important we are equitable. And that everyone is included in the process. So when we talk about affordable housing, giving these families the right step forward in contributing to the environmental crisis. Is a climate, is climate justice in action? I'm happy to see, looking over the agenda for today, the words climate action plan mentioned half a dozen times by staff, council members. The city, the planner. And resilient design four B, which hasn't been discussed in depth today. I was also ecstatic to hear you guys say at the beginning and the planning folks. That it went from low to high because in the verbiage, it said low to moderate. So one of the things I was already settled, as long as that's the truth. That is at a high priority now to include. In the resilient housing portion of this housing plan. Also, I would propose, if it's not too late in the game here, to change the title resilient design four B or. To something more along the lines of climate action oriented or climate action plan, because I think we're kind of. Burying the lead here on that particular element because it's all over that. When you look at what you guys talked about in the council feedback last time and the staff proposal, every time the word climate action comes up. But it's, it's called the resilient design. So that's one other suggestion I had. As we look at this housing process. Making new housing, my recommendation is to follow the San Jose, Morgan Hill, Menlo Park, Half Moon Bay. Ideology, which is to electrify everything, decarbonize everything. I was ecstatic to hear both council members. And planning commission, it doesn't say who said these things, but I commend them for mentioning. That instead of just saying encourage, which is part of the pitfalls historically with climate action. Is saying define requirements, add heat pumps. Make it so that everything is already ahead of of climate change disaster by allowing everything to be electrified hookups. Automatically upfront. So heat pumps. Making sure that the heats, the heat and water sources are electrified is safer as soon as we can get rid of methane in our house. It's safer for our families. It's safer for our planet. Also, I want to reiterate the point that.
Make a closing comment or something?
I want to reiterate that I was alarmed by the twenty twenty seven comment on goal HB four about climate action. I hope that as we all discussed, we're planning on making a climate action plan in twenty twenty three, spring of twenty twenty three. That's what I've heard. That's what I hope we stick to, and I hope we apply it to this particular plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Madam Clerk, do we have any, oh, I see hands here now in order. We can take them from the top.
Yeah, that was my last signed up speaker.
Okay, Sarah Chafin.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me this evening and also I wanted to thank the staff too. Because it looks like they spent a lot of time on the affordable housing overlay. Zone, and I think it looks terrific. I just wanted to request, I was looking at the map. And I represent properties at two oh seven seven South Bascom. Which is just a little bit south of Bascom and Campbell Avenue. And also there's, we have another site at seventeen twelve South Winchester Boulevard. And I'd like to ask for them to be included in the affordable housing overlay zone sites. Because our intention is to try to build some affordable housing there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis Randall.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can hear you, Dennis. Go ahead, please.
Yes, a couple of points. I mean, the, the limiter on producing housing is going to be economics. And the, the big thing about having economics work together to produce housing is flexibility to make plans work. On parking, we need to have flexibility. I would look at parking as an overall ratio. So that we can manage the parking facilities within a for rent community in such a way so that. People who need two cars can have two cars. And people who don't have a car or don't need a car won't have a car. So unbundled and on a, on a project level basis opposed to a per unit would be. The kind of flexibility that we would need. Next point is on the height limits. I mean, seventy five feet, I think is a. An appropriate height limit for a community like Campbell, but if you're afraid of having the state limits coming in. It's all, it's, it's going to be about having economic density. So really you should be putting maximum density on all of the sites that are in or around busy intersections and close. To mass transit. And taking that off the table, you'll, you'll force focus and development on more dense projects. Into the urban core, if you want to call it that. In Campbell and not really have risk of having. Height limits. You know, inappropriate areas. So really focusing on density where density should be would be a great thing. Two, other bonuses like open area, below grade housing, below grade parking. Things that add the qualitative elements of a development. Need to be given density bonuses well beyond seventy five per acre. Because you just can't afford to do the right thing unless you have the density to pay for it. And the last comment, when it comes down to the bifurcation of how you want to allocate affordable housing. In some instances. You have to look at the impact of very low, low, you know, moderate or. And all the different demarcations of affordability. Those have very specific impacts to a project's feasibility. So that should be kind of a sliding scale from the very low. You should maybe be looking at less than ten percent of units at the very low level. And then, and then grade it up as you go up the scale for income. This is, this will give developers the ability to. Model and understand the impacts of these, these affordability. Tranches to the feasibility of the project. With that, I'll let it go.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it, Dennis. See, Rosemary Early.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Can you hear me okay?
If you speak a little louder would help.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a person of very limited means. My social security disability income, and I am above the age of sixty five. Is less than two thousand dollars a month considerably. And I do not meet, I don't think any of Campbell's income limits. For how much you have to make a year to live in Campbell. This is absurd. And veterans are going to be in the same boat. And so I would like to ask the council to consider. Having what is basically indigent or very poor people's housing put in the, in the plan. Also, I'm concerned about, and this may sound crazy. What if Lexington Dam breaks and the police station that you have proposed building is flooded? Because the flood zone goes down Winchester and goes down Bascom and goes down Dry Creek. So those are just my thoughts. Thank you for your time. And I especially appreciate the council member who asked all the questions, who clearly read the plan. Thank you for your time again and good night.
Oh, thank you, Rosemary. Enrique Navarro.
Okay, is my mic working?
Oh, are you back?
Hi, can you hear me?
This is Enrique.
Yeah, this is me, Enrique.
Yep, go ahead, please.
Okay, actually I was, it was working. Okay, hi, guys. This is Enrique Navarro with the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. We talked at the last council, and he had, wanted to comment on two, on actually three items on the. On the housing element, the first being objective one, section A, the inclusionary housing ordinance. I just want to share that it's our general disposition. And inclusionary ordinances increase the cost of all housing projects and make market rate housing more expensive. So please keep this in mind throughout the process of drafting the plan for housing. On our second item, objective five, section B under, oh, sorry, no, that wasn't, that wasn't the one. Section, section four, section B under resilient design. I understand there was. I think I heard a staffer mention something about reach codes under that section, and we just wanted to share, comment. If the city were to consider that as a retrofit requirement like for existing housing. Please be aware, it's not just the cost of changing out. A gas stove or any kind of gas powered appliance. It's not just merely the cost of that, but. You have to retrofit the wiring of an entire house and for a typical suburban home, it can run up the cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. Just to redo the wiring so that you can accommodate new electric appliances like an electric stove or an electric oven. So if you were to do that, there would have to be some sort of transition assistance funds for homeowners, because that's going to, it's not just, again, the cost of. Appliances, it's going to be a very, very expensive retrofit for an entire house if that's, if that's a direction. And then the third one that we wanted to bring to your attention, objective five, section B. Under renter protections, actually, I did say that right. Okay. Under the second line of that first paragraph, I think it's on page twenty four, it talks about just cause eviction. And we just wanted to iterate our, our, our position on that, which is even though it means well. It can adversely affect our housing providers who by and large strive for positive and healthy relationships with their tenants. And want nothing more than to work with their tenant situations as it is in their interest to retain good tenants. And about seventy percent of our regional affordable rental housing providers are quote unquote mom and pop. Providers with twenty or fewer units and they, you know, live in the area. So we're just, we just want to be very cautious about, about that kind of, about that kind of an ordinance. That may get in the way of, of good relationships between tenants and housing providers. So I hope that's under two minutes. So that aside, thank you, council and staff.
Thank you, Enrique. Madam Clerk, do we, I don't see any other hands.
No, that was the last I had.
Okay. So we'll close the public portion there, bring it back to council for discussion. And what I suggest is let's all take ten minutes or less, just get through everybody. That's almost an hour just to get through everybody. So let's see where we stand after that point. In fairness, let's start the other way this time. Why don't we start? We can do, we can do.
I was just going to volunteer, if it helps, council, we can show on the screen the five key topic areas if that's.
Yeah, that would, that would help. And then any discussion but addressing, addressing those areas.
Sure, and I'm happy to go first if that works. Yeah, first off, I'd like to thank our commenters. I always brag, believe it or not, to other council members and cities when I meet them. We get such high quality and thoughtful feedback. It's always appreciated. And I think every commenter has brought up good points that I'd urged staff to take into consideration. I also want to say just generally, this is a very good report that I thought did a thorough job of incorporating our feed. Not just incorporating our feedback, but in some cases doing quite a lot of follow up in a short period of time. And research and it was thoughtfully presented. So I greatly appreciate that. There's also some pretty sophisticated recommendation or not quite recommendations at this age, but starting to look at topics that we're solidifying. To really take us to the next level in terms of having very targeted solutions on some of these topics. So I appreciate it. Getting into more detailed comments. I strongly support the limited BMR rent control, the new topic that staff brought back. I'm concerned that if, first off, just hearing a forty two percent increase is extremely concerning. But I'm concerned overall as we're thinking holistically about these topics and thinking about how do we target affordability. That could be wiped out in a year and defeat all the thoughtful work and considerations that's going by the council. If we're going to see those kind of increases and then we're back to square one. So that's a serious concern for me and I appreciate. The very targeted, limited proposal that's being brought here. To bring a laser focus to that problem. So I totally support that and I'd be interested in hearing further consideration of that. Tonight by, by council. I'll bring up a broader point with the table that was brought, which I appreciate very much about the BMR units. I'm concerned that we're, again, celebrating the, the. Thoughtful proposals that are being brought here. I'm concerned that we're not quite at where we need to be for, for the number of units. I note that the table, I believe, had some language that it could be up to this range. The, those given ranges that that were presented. And to bring up just one example that that was mentioned earlier, for example, if one or both. Of the city owned properties, for example, don't end up working out, and if that it's up to that range. That puts us at serious risk for not meeting the total affordable unit arena goal of sixteen hundred eighty five. So. I think there is. I'd like to see a little bit more to have more of a buffer there and not be relying on everything going perfectly and working out. Because where we are at this stage in the discussion, we don't know that that's going to be the case. So that's my, my general point there. Similarly, and I think it was council member Givens who brought up this point. I have a similar concern about SB ten and relying. Too much or exclusively on that for missing middle household. Same general comment. I think we need to be doing a lot more work there and just. One policy, there's no silver bullet solution will be my holistic comment that is going to get us all the way there on, on any of these topics. So. I think a little bit more remains to be done. Similarly, keeping with, with the missing middle and getting the discussion of some of the, the. Targeted groups. I want to bring this up just because I wasn't able to weigh in the last time we had this discussion, but with. The JPA and some of those proposals that that were brought up. And after discussions with the city attorney, where I feel confident that I can weigh in. I just want to say for the record that I do support looking at the, at that. Clearly, there's more questions. To be settled before we decide whether we want to. Look at that as a city, but I don't want to completely foreclose that opportunity. Particularly because the structure of that, the legislation that that was passed in the JPA that Kim was a part of. Probably depends a lot on the interest rates, which is going to be a limited window. And for example. We recently moved up some of our actions on, on, on measure L, the, we received an update about that. Because of interest rates and because that may be a limited opportunity. So we're looking at it as a city. I'm concerned that we may be giving up this opportunity if we push it down the priority list. So. I think that that may bear further discussion. I certainly don't think we're all the way there yet on the policy, but I think it bears. Looking at in serious consideration. The, the strategic interface, and I appreciate on, on, with legislation, and I appreciate very much. Councilmember Givens comments that, thank you for correcting for the record that, that we didn't discuss that as a council. I'm interested in hearing tonight how people feel. But as I said before. I'm not, you know, prescribing a particular version of this. I just think broadly as a city. I just think broadly as a city, we, we need to not just be reactive, but to think proactively. As I said about this legislation and I think that the subcommittee is a big piece of that and has a leadership role in doing so. I just would like to see a more integrated role and that may be some of how we're, we're able to meet some of the, these targets to go back to my earlier points about and looking at this table that I don't think we're, we're quite all the way there yet. So I bring that up as a topic for further discussion. I want to turn to the planning commission feedback. I'm strongly supportive of the first bullet point under the affordable housing overlay zone. And I'm strongly supportive of the last bullet point under firmly furthering fair housing and outreach. I'll just mention that I think, I appreciate that thoughtful comment. Given that where, that there, there was an interest in, in, or, or capacity or you know, that, that we're not necessarily having new policy change. So I think an education piece may be appropriate. I'm not supportive of the other planning commission recommendations with my thanks to the commission for further thoughtful feedback. I'll leave it there for now, but if there's further discussion, I'm happy to get in the reasons behind that. I, I, I do, I want to address the couple of the comments that were brought up. One commenter, Sarah Chaffin. I would ask staff to look at the sites that she suggested to follow up with her for if, for, as part of any further work on an affordable housing overlay zone. And Dennis's comments as, as well about the parking requirements are well stated. I think this is moving in the right direction. I appreciate the thoughtful guidelines that staff brought back. I'm concerned that it may still be a bit more restrictive than we need. I think two spots may be a bit excessive for some of the developments that we're looking at. And we have a unique opportunity with the scale of some of the projects that, that are being suggested and that we're looking at as part of the housing element to really think thoughtfully about how to allow that kind of flexibility. Whereas if we stay too rigid, and again, I think we are moving in the right direction, but if it's something overly rigid, we're locking in that, that amount of VMT and that's not something that we're going to be able to scale back at a future date or it'll be difficult if not impossible to do so. I appreciate a little bit more flexibility there, possibly looking at, at some of what Dennis suggested. And I appreciate very much council member Givens' comment about adding veterans as one of the categories for policies that, that we're targeting. And I appreciate that that outreach was, was done today, but I think that, that's a great suggestion. I'll, I'll leave it there for, for my comments. Oh, I'll just, I'll finish by saying, I appreciate the clarification that, that you brought up earlier about my question about the timing of the climate action plan. I, I think with that said, the 2027 date, it sounds like maybe a little bit misleading. So maybe take out that date or change that or look at that, but, but the clarification made, made a lot more sense. And I'll just finish by, by saying overall, I think this is moving in a great direction and that there's going to be some really strong work to be considered here by HCD when, when that's submitted. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you guys for staff, a lot of work and to our consultants. Can you go back to the slide of the five areas that we're supposed to be commenting on here? Okay, so I'll start with the maximum average unit size or FAR. I like the comment from the planning commission about counting bedrooms or, or yeah, I guess we're using the word bedrooms and versus unit size. But that if it's number of bedrooms, but a maximum total for the whole unit. That, that might help because then you get more square feet. Rob, you're looking at me with the question, is that, do you understand what I mean?
One more time, I'm sorry, I was just trying to get clarity off.
The planning commission recommends counting bedrooms versus what we have as shows a maximum unit size. And I'd like to see a combination where if you say you have a maximum of two bedrooms, but then you put a maximum on the square footage of the actual unit, since we're trying to create a density and have more units per lot. Okay, that's the first one. Where'd you go with your thing again here? Okay, the below market rate rent control, that was kind of surprising of all the units to not be included that those were not. So I do support looking at a BMR rent control and also would encourage us to find people to be on our rent, rental assistance board. That hasn't been active, I think I met one guy from 10 years ago or five years ago, I'd actually been on it. And when the Timber Cove issue came up, it was like all of us were scrambling to figure out what's going on. And so I support the coming up with the BMR rent control. I'm concerned about parking and I kind of support the unbundled concept in the sense that if I have one unit, I get one parking space. If I want a second unit, I have to pay for that. So I get that, it gives us the developer and the unit manager more flexibility. I don't think our standards are too high. I'm very concerned that we're going to totally impact all our residential neighborhoods when we stop or when we don't allow these parking in these units. And I mentioned earlier, and I know Liz and I both have talked about this is that the first floor could be designed for parking now, but then you allow them to get rid of the parking as the eight years go by and supposedly we all aren't using our cars. So then they could then build housing in the floors where the parking was allocated. We don't mention anything about that and that would solve the need right now to have the parking, but then plan for the future if people, if parking does start becoming less desirable. I'm very concerned about the city properties, just logistically, what it would cost to move the courtyard, what it would cost to get rid of the parking structure, all the agreements of who has paid into that. I think that in the eight years, it's going to be very unrealistic, it'll probably come out in the eight years. And if we keep listing that on those charts and like council member Lopez stated, we're barely going to meet the numbers if we take those 300, 200 to 300 units out of those two properties. And I don't want to get penalized later for us overestimating and not providing what we've said. If we look at fee waivers, how is that going to affect our budget? And one thing I think I mentioned before is us being able to subsidize and put in our city budget, the ability to help subsidize these fees. But that's not something that I've seen staff come forward with in any of our five year budgets. For instance, the ARPA funds that we have set aside could be a great way to absorb these fee waivers that somehow there has to be cost recovery. And if it's coming out of our budget, then we need to be notified ahead of time and not wait. You know, we need to show it in the five year. One of the things about mobile home parks, there is a statement in here under the staff report. Where'd it go now? It talked about if, I know it's not what we moved forward with, but it talked about if a mobile home park wanted to develop, the developer had to pay for moving costs and the ability to find a unit somewhere else. I think preserving people that live in the mobile home parks or modular buildings is important. But at the same time, like for instance, Timber Cove is a large parcel. And what about if they wanted higher density in there? So could you, for instance, take half of the units, help pay for them to move out temporarily, build higher density or even allow the heights to go up where a single unit right now may be only one story that you could allow a two story inside within a mobile home park? The two sites added that Sarah mentioned, I see there's why there's no reason that we should, we, there, there is a reason we should add them because our, the person who is requesting it is desirable to have it be added as housing, so I'd support that. Let's see. Okay, I got that one, got that one, got that one. I think moving up the climate action plan, putting it out at 2027 is pretty far out. And maybe it's that we just don't put a date like that right now. Okay, that one, few waivers, home park. In the beginning, you mentioned about the schedule and that we're providing comments tonight. You're going to publish the document in the end of May and then it's going to be submitted to HCD. And you said only if we have a lot of public comment or controversy would it come back to council? I think it should come back to council either way. And just to tie up loose ends and make sure that we have everything that we, our comments. So I'd like to see that to come back to council before it does go out to HCD. And then the comment that was made about the low income, I forget the woman's name, but she talked about being on social security and that veterans don't qualify and, but the amount they're receiving seems very low. And so is there any evaluation in our BMR program of what the threshold for low income is to take into consideration, like look at what the average person gets for social security and the average for veterans so that they would qualify? I think her comment was she didn't qualify. There's a mention in H-5H about homeless shelters, but nowhere in our housing element have we identified any sites where that could potentially be located. There was a comment by the previous planning director that the site was on Winchester Boulevard just by Santa Moss where there's a storage facility right now. And I have never, ever heard any discussion beyond that of where we might be able to put, put a homeless shelter. And does a shelter have to be independent and of itself or could there be units within the actual development that are set aside for transitional housing? Not necessarily permanent, but have it, just like what a homeless shelter could be is transitional housing. So I'm going to go to the 75 foot height limit and I think that's my last one. The sites that are identified as the green sites on the land use map and maybe you can bring that map up. All but one is what I would consider the corridor where I, yeah, that one right there. So the, the only one is the one off of Winchester, the little triangle one. All the rest of the green are over in the area where there is not going to be a huge impact to the neighbors, well, I take that back, half, now the whole Prune Yard site is shown as a housing project. I think we only showed the one half. The Prune Yard site, why is the whole site green now? Just noticed that.
The entire site is indicated for, with, as a housing opportunity site. Just there's reduced unit counts assumed within the project.
I thought the Prune Yard, we were only looking at the, what was the office building at Campbell and then the other side by the garage.
In addition to that, we were looking at the corner at Winchester and East Campbell Avenue. So there was a bank, I believe there's a bank building in that area.
Bank America.
Bank of America, right, that was being considered for a housing site as well. So we applied a, an overlay to that area to try to provide additional clarity.
Okay, so minus that parcel, minus the Bank America site, the green parcels are not immediately adjacent to the single story, single family home development. And with the Prune Yard tower height and the proposed development on Southwest Expressway and Bascom, which is going to be 115 foot tall tower housing for Google. I see those other green parcels as the ones that can go higher than the 75 feet. This is something the community would need to be making decisions on whether it has to go to a vote. But those parcels there, if we could increase the height limit, we can certainly pick up a lot more units. And then for instance, the ones that we don't show on the chart right now for the city property could then become 200 or 300 in those green parcels there. And if the 75 foot height limit needs to go to the community, when would that be on the ballot? Is this something we want to put on the ballot in 2022?
Well, I personally don't have the dates. I believe you can, you can make the ballot. And first the council will have to give consensus that they'd want to put this on the ballot and then we'd have to look at a timeline that works.
Okay, and there's no clear direction.
I'm just, this is my.
We're there now, we're over now if we can.
Okay, I'm over my 10 minutes.
You're over by him.
Ah, I tried.
I know, thank you. Councilor Givens.
There, ordinance, modification of the inclusionary ordinance. I've given comment, what I think would be better is to simplify the whole approach and make it consistent for, for sale and for rent. I'm fine if staff wants to make a recommendation on how to distribute it to low, low and low to help us meet our numbers because we actually have different categories that we have to meet in addition to the 1,600 number. So I think that that would make sense there. And I'm fine dropping the 10 unit threshold to seven. I'm fine with the three to, five to seven units paying an in-loofe. However, until we have an in-loofe study, we, I believe we need, I would encourage others to hopefully support this, we need to remove the in-loofe option because it currently is $37.50 a square foot or $42.50 a square foot, whatever it is. And construction costs are in the neighborhood of $700 a square foot. So it's out of sync and it will cause us more problems than it will help solve. So I'm fine with the approach, just we have an interim situation that is not good. Okay, there's a comment in paragraph C of item one about density bonus is triggered by projects of five or more and SB 35 is triggered by a project of two or more residences. I could not find that and if staff would be, validate that at some point. I sent you my reference document and I couldn't, I couldn't figure out where that came from. Okay, and then, okay, seven, the B, establish affordable housing impact fees. I'm fine, but I thought the commission raised the concern that the linkage fees could discourage commercial development and job growth. My comment is, according to A-BAG and Plan 2050, we have too much, we have an imbalance of jobs to housing. So if we impact our ability to bring in more commercial, I'm not sure that that in the long run is a bad thing based on trying to meet what SB, what Plan Bay Area 2050 says. So I'm in support of doing the impact fees, if subject to the impact fee study, the NEXIS study. And the whole section on non-residential development is greater than 20 gross square feet and all of that. I would say it has to be the NEXIS study to figure out how to make those numbers make any sense. I absolutely do not support under C, affordable housing overlay zones. I do not support creation of a transfer of development rights. That means if you have a project of seven, of 75 units an acre and you have a church next door and you can take the church's 75 square feet, 75 units an acre and make yours 150 units. I'm using that as an example, that's what transfer of development rights means to me. And I just think that is a pickle that Campbell doesn't want to get into because we're already subject to the density bonus, which is 50 to 100% increase in units per acre. So we don't need to make it worse. And I doubt that we could use that in account to meet our goals because it's a hypothetical. Just like we can't use density bonus numbers, we can't do that. So I would not support that. I appreciate the housing overlay zone is trying to work within the 75 foot limit, that's appreciated. There's this comment from the Berkeley study, it doesn't really apples to apples. Sergio, when I read through this, the staff review of that, there was a couple of small points, but overall I didn't see how that was quite parallel to what we were trying to achieve with your comment. There's a comment, yeah, reduced permit fees deviation from certain development standards. Has that worked anywhere else? It would be helpful to know where some of these ideas have been implemented and actually work. Because my concern is we won't, we will have a. Um, because my concern is, we won't uh, we will have a um. Not not cost recovery, um is my concern. And um, when um, my other comment was that, when you take a look at the fact that the city does not get property tax. From affordable units, um, it's a big hit. Um, and the numbers um in the staff, in this memo that staff receive, a council receive from staff. Um, was helpful, but there's even more projects that weren't in the list there, or it was in the second sheet. Um, we have a lot of affordable units. But as um, uh Director Fuente has explained, they're in various categories, so it's hard to figure them all out. But we have a lot, and we don't, and we lose a lot of property tax, and we're going to start losing. Um, a lot of property tax, which is going to make it harder to have cost recovery and supporting our city goals. So I really question um that. Um, I, I support the approach, just uh be careful. And then it says allow five percent increase of dense, over-density bonus. My question again is, I I appreciate what it's trying to do, but it doesn't, our famous table, it doesn't count. Uh, we can't hypothesize the density bonus number or five percent over it to meet our housing Rena numbers, if I correct? You know what I mean, am I saying that correctly?
Your question is, how do we arrive that number in the table on there?
Um, last time around, we could figure out the number of units per parcel. We've clarified, we're using the um industry standard uh gross number. And we are utilizing to meet HCD's requirements, um twenty-five units an acre, say. But we cannot assume, even though every project that's been built in Campbell in the last five years has had a density bonus of some type. We cannot assume a density bonus. So we can't say it's gone from twenty-seven to thirty-five or whatever the number is. So we have to stick to the twenty-seven, so I'm just curious. I I I appreciate where you're trying to go with it. But I want to be sure that we understand that the five percent increase in density bonus over the state density bonus would be a hundred and five percent or fifty-five percent. Or forty percent, and we can't, we don't get credit for it during this process.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that it's really worth doing. Um, and then provide for city funding, support of frontage improvements. I like all these ideas, but I'm struggling with how. We're really, we are not a financially rich, big corporation city. And coming up with funding, and I will tie that to my favorite comment. We're going to be adding fifteen hundred units, sixteen hundred units of affordable housing ideally. And um, who's going to manage those? Is it going to come under our our BMR program and how are we going to fund that? And I keep going back to my favorite, I think we should do transient occupancy tax and register. The um, uh, short-term occupancy uh projects. And we objected to it last time, the discussion was because it was considered a code enforcement issue. And in fact, the end of the conversation was, it's not a code enforcement issue, it's a business license issue. So um, I think it's an easier thing to do than we made out. Potential affordable housing overlay zones, I would agree. That um, the locations identified by Ms. Chafin could easily be added because of their location. I would also add the um one um at Santa Moss Aquino, uh the bank corner there that we added. Because there's no house, housing around that one. I think that would be um a good one, and the reason I think it's particularly a good one is, I think that is where we could do missing middle housing. Because it's a small enough parcel with a density that might actually provide um some flexibility uh there. Um, I would also possibly consider doing the church site um on Campbell Ave. For the Methodist uh church that's there. And um, let's see what else, yeah, those are the two parcels there. And. I have trouble understanding what you were recommending for the mix of units. So there were three things, uh Councilwoman Landry, there's bedroom count, unit size, and FAR. Can you explain the pros and cons of why we should do one or the other?
I'll, I'll start, I know Stephen wants to jump in here. So the FAR I put as a different tool, it's Flurry Ratio, it's a tool that's used to regulate the massing as per. It's like, once it's a housing goal, that's more of an objective standards, uh that's something we can look at as we do our objective standards, that's not really housing program. But uh, the objective on the maximum average unit size is, could you, and could you? Try and uh regulate to have units be more affordable by design, under the premise that smaller units are more affordable and large units are not. And two ways to get there, one was what staff proposed, which was an average unit size of the, of the each unit. And the second was um more, more bedrooms versus less bedrooms, um which is, I think I heard from um Councilwoman Landry. I think we'd have to look at that a bit more, I don't know of any case, we know of case studies where jurisdictions have adopted the maximum average unit size, Berlin Gimans one, I don't know. Of one, but there might be some where they've adopted regulations on, on maximum bedrooms. So we just have to see um. What what they result in, I'll say a little bit anecdotally, I I wasn't a jurisdiction that for septic. Considerations had a limit on bedroom size, because you usually tie the number of households to to a septic demand, it was a whole, whole different thing, had to do with um. County Department of Environmental Health. But it resulted in a lot of units that had a lot of dens and other rooms that ended up being bedrooms. So a little, a little caution, we can look at it, but I know o- oftentimes when you put a bar out. Sometimes homeowners can, and developers can get creative about that, but I just say we would, we'll look a bit more at. How to either blend those two um regulatory approaches or use one or the other.
I appreciate that, because that's one of the reasons I'm a little nervous about this not coming back to council. I'm worried about this going to uh um as a document to HCD. And once it goes to HCD, I'm assuming we can't change much after it's gone to HCD and had a review.
You can't, yeah, so the the HCD gets two bites, at least two bites, three bites at the apple. So this is a draft housing element that will first go for public review. Then to HCD for their initial review and comment, after that, it will come back to you. You will, you'll receive their comments, receive their feedback. I'm imagining there's, there's some big pivot points you'll have at that point. You'll have all the in, the input from HCD, the input from the IR, the input from stakeholders. And you, there'll be opportunity to 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 change the approaches in these programs and the housing opportunity sites.
So uh.
Can we close it, we're well, can we close it, just maybe close it, I know others, others want to speak to.
I appreciate where you're coming from, but this is the single most important meeting we can have.
But everybody wants to get some input in.
Then I would appreciate having some time to come back.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this, this to me is where I'm very concerned about what the document is and how much. Because if we make changes down the road that decrease the capacity, or do something else, I'm worried about what that does to the HCD review.
Vice Mayor Roden.
Thank you. Could you put the slide with the topics? So I'll start with, um, I do support the um. Affordable housing oversight or overlay zone. I think that uh is another tool to add to help us get to our goal of, or target of trying to. Come up with low and low-income um units to, you know, uh service our community. Um, I'm not sure about the um. I I would agree with in, including the the property that the speakers um asked to include this evening. I'm not sure about home church and whether that was suggested by them, or if it was just um a planning commission recommendation. And whether or not we should be including them, whether we should be consulting with them. Um, I I'm not sure if their, if their site is included in the housing opportunity. I I kind of lost track of that, so any, that would be my one concern about home church. Santa Moss Plaza, I would support, um including the property that um Councilmember Given spoke about across the street. Is currently being renovated and under, under development, so I'm not sure. Um, what use is going in there, but they seem to be really active in um. Some type of use there, so I don't know that that a housing opportunity would be, would be, would be viable there. I agree that um the missing middle should be a prior, high priority, I'm a bit um. I'd like to see a little more information on the opportunity housing uh situation that was brought to us the last council meeting. Uh, I, it's listed as a moderate, but. Without further information, I I don't know whether it should be a higher priority or not, I know there were time constraints on it. But to me, if we have an opportunity to be addressing uh middle-income um situation sooner than later, we should be doing that. I would support the um. The maximum uni- unit size that staff has recommended is of the twelve-hundred fifty square feet as the um average unit size. I would support the below-market rate uh rent control for the, for the limited BMR units only. Um, I also would like to suggest and encourage that we. Work with Project Sentinel and also review our ordinance and rental, rent mediation ordinance and. Attempt to come up with a solution that might address um tenant needs. Um, I know that it's been dormant, but maybe now is the time to be looking at that as, as an additional tool to be. Uh, helping our resident, res, rental um community. I also support the parking that I I. I didn't realize that we need to look at our parking um ratios and support the the um, the unbundled. Unbundle approach. Where appropriate, um. Um, as far as the AFFH and outreach, I I agree that that should be a high priority and including veterans, this uh should, should also be part of the um policy. And then I had a question on the, and I think it's been answered on, as far as the draft policy going to HCD. And the process, so it will go to HCD, and it'll come back with their comments. And council will be able to weigh in at final uh time in order to finalize the policy and. Something that we may recommend today may change, and and we may not recommend it at, at a future date, is that a correct assumption?
That is correct.
Okay, and um the last comment, and it's more a question, um maybe staff could, could. You know, provide some additional comments um on the building height limit limitation and putting it to the voters. Uh, it seems that state law has somewhat um. Uh, caused us to, I mean, we were in a situation where even though we have a building height limitation, it, there's a possibility that, that. A development could exceed the building height limitation. So my question would be, would, is it even worth going to the voters to impose an addition, a, a newer updated version of a building height limitation? When really state law is going to preempt that? So. It, I mean, it's a question, but also I guess a, a discussion for, for council. So then my comments are, thank you.
Thank you. So let me um kind of, Rob, go through this in the order that we talked about, but I think I'll cover the topic, so. Um, you know, just, I'll double back to one earlier, just a comment on I um. It probably doesn't matter, I don't support elevating the, the mobile homes for two reasons, I think the protections don't change anything with the negotiations that went on. And um, the state law does protect, make it very expensive to move people out, and as Councilwoman Landry commented, should, should they even want to take part of that? And make it higher density, this precludes them from doing that, it, it says you can't do that, even if the park and the affected homeowners wanted to do it. I, I would leave it alone, I, I frankly, I don't remember the vote being three, but that's okay, because I could swear that we voted on strategic. You know, interface with the legislature, so, so I'm probably wrong on both. So, so I mean, I, I mean, what was, was there, was there a three for the mobile home? I'm just. If you've, I, I mean, I, I didn't, and I think Council, Councilmember Lopez did, so. He did, so it was, it was yours, and I don't remember either, I mean, I thought there wasn't. But it, but, but it worries me just because it, it actually puts a control, a, a hold on there. They can't do something they want to do, but I don't also see what the problem is, because it worked very well. So unless Councilwoman Landry changes reminder, confirms she voted, no, I trust that you looked at the, that you have the record and all that. I would support voting on the strategic interface, I think as Councilmember Lopez said, it doesn't preclude anything that the subcommittee is doing, in fact. The subcommittee could be the mechanism by which we do that for this council, but a future council might say, it's not the mechanism, but it, but we've set it as a priority in the city. So I think that makes sense to do. Um, as far as the BMRs, I think earlier on, it may, maybe Councilman Lopez started too. Uh, worries me that, that we are relying on that one list of almost everything has to come in to get to the number. So I wouldn't mind seeing a broader range of flexibility in BR, BMR sites. To go beyond it, for example, if the city sites fall off, when I don't, I don't want to pull them today, because we're going to study them, we'll find out. But if they come off, then we're right there. I think given that we're, we're, we're talking about five thousand, when we need three thousand, we have the ability to do something similar, maybe out on that range. But where we have more sites, and we, and we had um, uh, this, Ms. Chafin say, for example, there's a couple properties and other ones. I would add some more in there if we could. I know that um. I, and I would leave the city sites in, like I said, I know that this costs us a little bit, for example, we could, it costs us the more we have, if they're um. Uh, that could cost us on property tax and things like that, this is a cost to have in the BMRs, I mean, I can't, I, I don't know that that's going to drive us. That you tell me, but that's going to be worst case one or two percent of the property tax that overall prop tax, we get something like a couple percent. We can't not do it, because we might lose that, the same thing, I think, with who manages it. It could get expensive, but it's going to be a cost to having those units, and the goal is the units, it's not um, you know, it's. Wi- without regard at this point, I think, that how much is that going to cost us? Because we can find out, always find reasons to not do it. Um, on the um, the maximum square footage. Uh, where the planning commission talked about bedroom counts, but my only comment there, I don't know the answer to this. You know, it doesn't affect mass or bulk, but it seems like it would unless. Unless in that same mass, we have to put a lot more units, right, a lot, a lot higher density, but in the same mass. If we, if we do that, um, or if we don't do that, does it affect the feasibility of that project? So, so the, my only concern on that one is, is there a model in which we tweak the size of the, of the? Individual units and/or the bedrooms, and it makes it not feasible to do the project? Because if there's not a return for the developer, it's not going to happen. In the situation you gave with Saint Anton's, the interesting thing is, eighty-five percent of the total units were within. The guideline we're trying to do now, is eighty-five percent were less than, what, fa- fa- thousand, or an average a thousand, less than twelve-hundred. Fifteen percent were not, so if that's the case, what's the problem? I, I don't know that there's a problem, I understand the goal. But Saint Anton's might be a good example that it, it worked out for itself, and it may have worked out that way, because that was how it was economically feasible for them to do it. So that worries me if we artificially put something in there. Um, I don't cons, I don't um support the rent control as presented on the BMRs. Um, we're, we're talking about one instance we know, and it could become an issue. Um, if we do it, I certainly would raise the amount, this is only going to happen when the, when the rents are well below the allowed limit for BMR. And that's because, for example, you mentioned it, they cut rents during COVID, and now they're penalized, because they can't go back up when, when things are better. So it would be a disincentive to cut rents in a COVID-type situation, and it would be an incentive to try to churn tenants, to get a new tenant in, where you could go. It's not market value, we call BMR value, max BMR value, so that worries me that um. It's actually a, a disincentive to, to lower rents when you could, and is a disincentive or an inability to come back. Or quickly to, I'll call it BMR market, if I can, that thirty percent range, I don't know, but Bill doesn't like that term, I'm sure of it. You kind of know what I mean. Um, let's see, the parking worries me, the unbundle or the hybrid worries me, only because it's been discussed, the impact. On where everybody parks, we saw this problem at La Valencia when they were charging for parking. And it spread out into the neighborhoods, and we were forced at least for a while to do parking permit zones, which I don't think anybody wants. You know, we, we pulled it off on Milwich in that area, because I always felt it was artificially between Santa Moss Expressway, Winchester. And Hamilton, you had to find areas that kept neighbors from across those streets probably parking in there. But um, I worry that um, that doing that has some unintended consequences. Um, and also, we saw at La Valencia, it didn't go down in parking, you had, because of rents, you had multiple families living in individual units. And that meant you had, instead of one or two cars, you might have had two or four. And restricting it makes a little bit of a bigger issue, so um, I understand the intent, I just got, we got to be careful. Um, I'm not supportive of increasing the seventy-five-foot limit, as Vice Mayor said, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And even if we think it's a good idea to do that, if we have projects like the one downtown, they're going to exceed it. Let's get some experience and see what happens with that, and we might say, hey, we can, we can do this in other areas. But I wouldn't speculate on it now, and also with everything on, on our plates, I don't think. But I wouldn't speculate on it now. And also with everything on on our plates, I don't think it's time to go to another ballot measure. That's not a small task. We've seen that before. With Measure O and Measures M N and O, I think it was before that, right? And then the opportunity housing, I would agree To bring that back and look at it mu- much more detail. We don't know enough about it. But it fits that middle, that middle type housing and there may be timing on on whether that's feasible if we wait Too many months to do. So I'd like to hear more. Just looking at your list here in the planning commission list, have a little bit of time. The I'm fine with the affordable housing overlay zone. The maximum average unit size I discussed, that that just worries me, and I really think it should be penciled out As to as to making sure that we don't kill projects that could otherwise work. And typically, the bigger units help fund the The smaller units, especially when the smaller units are BMR. I'm not A fan, I don't think of of essentially trying to force an ADU on somebody. I'm not sure that's how we should make our numbers. And I am okay or supportive of the The AFFH and the outreach, I'm fine adding in veterans and things like that, but the more outreach we do, the better. And that that probably also, let's see, well, I think we had last time, we talked about that As far as the type of outreach, language and things like that. So I think I think I covered at least everything I had. So, thank you. So what I wanted to do before we can come back and talk a little more, but We've given you a lot. So do you, let's start like we did last time. Do you have the right direction from us? Or do you have questions for us where we have to confirm what that direction is? I think that's the next step.
I think so. I had two follow up questions. I just want to read back. I did get Counsel majority consensus on supporting the below market rate rank control. I do have a majority of the council giving consensus to to go forward with that. Noted your objection, Mayor Resnikoff, but I noted the consensus of the council.
BMR, okay, absolutely.
And then I'll just go back to my notes on the Mobile home parks. We did have, and we might have gotten it wrong, we did have Lopez Gibbons and Landry on the affirmative for elevating that. If we got that wrong, we can, we can put it back to the council, but that's where we had landed.
So this is supporting the the elevating the priority for the restrictions on mobile homes?
You made the point that if we say you can't do anything, we've precluded that as an opportunity.
I I get, and that was brought up today, but I I I'm not trying to reopen everything in the past. I honestly thought that it went differently. Given it's one park and they seem to, we do work it out each time with the contracts, the city kind of gets perfectly involved. Yeah, there was some angst, but it worked out. And I'm not sure putting restrictions on one side makes it work out any easier, may may make it more contentious. But now there's the issue. So so that's just my thought on that. I I'm really not trying to re-litigate it, but I I I didn't remember it the way it voted.
Yes, comments for sure.
Can I finish my comments?
On the mobile home?
Well, on the mobile home, I think it's a very vulnerable topic for many mobile phone blocks have been removed. And and any projection we can give is helpful, but I still have my comments to give.
Beyond that.
Yes.
Understand, but but we're 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 just saying, we've spoken for an hour here and staff has questions about what we've covered.
Yeah, those were the two big question points. Look to Stephen and Andrew. We have notes and areas where we need clarifications. Generally, we have on the rest of the categories, these programs will go forward and we have varying council feedback on how they'll they can mold Modify the programs, but those were the, for me, the only two key key points we wanted to get back to you on.
Is this relating to mobile?
No, but on questions that I don't think we resolved.
Other other issues that weren't resolved?
Yeah.
We should ask that of everybody.
The strategic interface with the legislature, I think there were two in support.
I just wanted to have the discussion.
Okay, just thought staff might want to clarify.
Okay, fair enough.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry to not bring that back. So if we had it in the the housing element as a strategic approach to interfacing with the legislature. Yeah, so just looking for council consensus on that.
We'll we'll give a consensus, I think, but in fairness, you want to have some Comments about it, that that's fair, right? I mean, we want to do that before we
I I have a lot more comments that I did not get through, and I really think that it's appropriate that I at least have an opportunity to go through them.
I I don't have a problem with how how much time because everybody's going to have the same thing and
Well, everyone got through their comments once, so I'll try, I will.
In the same time that everybody was given, so.
I don't think, I I with due respect to you, I don't feel that this is a topic that we can afford to have Arbitrary time limits on. This is extremely critical. And I've been as efficient as I can be. I I worked hard on my notes.
Can, I know you have a lot to say, so I just have one question. You said those were the only two items that we didn't agree on or that you didn't understand Where the vote was?
Correct, yeah. A lot of these programs have considered at the same priority level. I heard feedback on how to look at the programs and within them. I I didn't hear any other Notes from council that would change that. Those are the only two areas, I'm sorry, plus one on the legislative strategic. Where I think staff was looking for specific council Direction on consensus.
What about the fee waivers?
The fee waivers, I think there will be more to come. Again, at this point, again, I think of it as a funnel. We're identifying programs, we're identifying things we'll look at as we get into the affordable housing Overlay zone, we'll note the comments you have, we'll bring back probably some more fiscal analysis, analysis of fee waivers and the pros and cons, but I don't think you need more Discussion from staff standpoint about that.
Go ahead. I was just asking to prioritize some of the stuff. We may not cover every point that everybody wants to make, but it's a There's a lot of, there's sixty-five pages of
And and you you are correct. I no one commented on the Dense, what do you call it? This getting credit for the next door neighbor. What's the, what's the word I'm looking for here? I made that comment. Nobody gave any additional feedback of people are supportive. Under the I'm the Housing overlay zone, I'm supportive of that one component of it. I would like to know what other people think about that. Because it's a it's a significant Consideration. You may say it's not relevant right now. It's not a big deal now, and that's fine with me. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to comment. I identified and comment. I am not supportive of the ADU deed restriction, as we've said before, and one of the reasons I'm not, unless I've misunderstood The process allows an assumption of a percentage of ADUs that will be affordable. Isn't there a number built into the equation? In the earlier discussions, we said there was.
Yeah, and and we did, we did remove the ADU deed restriction program. It's not
I know we removed the deed restricted program, but in the earlier presentations on the housing element, There was an assumption from the Turner Center that HCD accepted That assumed a percentage of the ADUs would be affordable.
That's correct.
And we're still utilizing that number.
That's correct.
So I think that kind of takes that problem out of the way. There's a question in here referencing Bus stops, and I won't find the exact quote, but what would had to do with Berkeley, I think, what do we consider A relationship and state law typically does consider bus stops. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what we were saying there. And we talked about the SB ten. I think a lot is going to depend on what land locations, what opportunity sites we identify as to how viable the SB ten will be. And the only thing with the state legislature one is I think we'll have to have a task where At the beginning of every year, the council will have to revisit the mandate Are the priorities given to the legislative subcommittee so that it meets the housing goals. It's a little broader now than it, and it would need to be. So you would need to follow back on that. I'm supportive of the rent control, which we talked about. Those priority feedback. And I just to make a comment, I was not, when I mentioned the relationship between The property tax, I'm not saying that that's a reason not to do it. What I'm saying is that that is A consideration, just an awareness consideration of when we say that we might eliminate fees For projects, that's one less source of income. And we have to be aware that the housing isn't going to be additional housing, it's not going to be generating money to the general Plan. So it's just a lot of factors that are reducing the potential for income. It's not a reason not to do something. It's just an aspect of consideration. I agree with, I think, what several council members and mayor and vice mayor said. The La Valencia problem was an interesting learning experience because of the bug Connecting of the units. And then they they actually separated and charged people parked on the street. And the problem has gotten better, but that's partially because they are now parking in the city's public parking lot at JD Morgan Park off of Bud. And they are now starting to fill back in on the neighborhood streets. So I think we have a good example there and also on Apricot, where the density of the units and the narrowness of our streets. So I am open to a discussion of what we learn, but I don't think a single solution fits all Kind of thing. So I think that that's an important aspect. And a lot of, and and I think it's fair to say that state law is already changing of the bill parking requirements. So I I think we don't want to spend our time redoing what's already coming down in terms of state law, and that's also why I was talking about the public transit and the buses. And I think I said that I'm supportive of impact fees on Commercial property. I am not supportive of Impact fees on single family homes, inclusionary ordinance fees without an ADU. I don't, I think it's penalizing Property owners to say you have to build an ADU. And that then you get into all the complexity of a remodel triggers it, what triggers it. So I don't think that that's appropriate. I gave you my recommendations on additional sites on the housing overlay zone. I would agree that all of these sites, particularly the home church and the Santa Mas Plaza, where we have contacts with the owners. It would be appropriate to chat with them and see. And and Vice Mayor, I didn't know which property you were talking about at Santa Mas that's getting developed. What was I missing?
I thought you were referring to the bank building that's across the street from Santa Mas Plaza.
I am.
Yeah, it's it's they're actively doing something there. There there's a lot of construction going on.
You went by there more recently than I.
It's in my neighborhood, so I I frequent it every day.
So I mean, staff hasn't identified that yet because we haven't gone through the parcels. So 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 be it. That that was just a suggestion. I agree that the resilient housing policies and so with the the climate action plan That Councilmember Lopez brought up really needs to be something. I think we're legally obliged to have one, aren't we? And we've never had one. So I mean, we need to have this and the sooner the better. And I think that twenty twenty-seven Was was a shock to me as well. So I think it needs to be given the proper date. Let's see, and the resilient design and all of that, a lot of this should, I think you've done it in other places, tied it back to the objective standards. I I think there's some opportunity to reconnect with objective standards In here. There's a comment in here. I wasn't sure where staff left it. From Planning Commission feedback, including pre-approved ADU plans, setting a goal for equal number of shelter beds. I think we have all said that we, this as a city, have been actively supporting the county programs For shelter beds, that's where our tax dollars go to. We did have a parcel Identified for emergency shelter. And I think it was the same parcel you're referring to, but it has gone through planning now and is now getting developed. So if that's the case, Then we've lost what we had previously identified. It could have been a different parcel on the other side of Dell, but it was somewhere in that area and it would be appropriate to re-identify and clarify that.
It's the storage locker.
It's behind it. It's actually a little space in between.
In that area.
In that area, yeah. And And then including a density bonus for developers that serve special needs populations. We haven't really talked about that because we're putting Special needs in with our BMR program. Do we need something like this? Density bonus for special needs?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
You want to, you feel that strongly enough, we should leave that in.
Having an additional density, but I'm sorry, the additional five, additional density bonus for Special needs populations is a good way to address that population.
Okay, above and beyond incorporating them into our BMR program per se.
Correct. So I'll give an example. So take, for instance, that you have Merrill Gardens, which which does provide Supportive services onsite for special needs population, disabled communities. So in 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 a future Merrill Gardens scenario, somebody were to build another one of those projects, you could provide an incentive by providing additional Density bonus for providing that type of supportive care.
So I'm thinking more of something like Presley Homes. And if they provide A Special needs population Unit, do they then get a density bonus? I just think the wording has to be thought out. I don't disagree with with a special senior center and special needs like that, but if you, if it can Intendedly be applied to any project that puts in one unit, one BMR unit.
Yeah, I would add the the way that we were drafting or intending it would could apply to any project. So that's correct, but the idea being is they have to go above and beyond what the building code would otherwise allow or require. So there is a requirement that within a a project, a new building, a certain percentage of the units need to be accessible. So for instance, if you went above and beyond that, you might get an additional bonus of sorts as an incentive.
So so I would just caution, what is one unit or two units worth in terms of that? I just, you just need to be more thoughtful, have 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 an opportunity to spend a little more time on on that as you go forward. And I I did think the language, one translating Language is an opportunity for a consultant to do something More quickly than I think we have on our schedule. I mean, that's not an expertise you'd have in-house, so it would be a consultant To make our housing site accessible and language wise. So I think that's worth It's got a high priority, but I think how we would implement it would be a good thing. Okay, and I won't go through them all, but I did review the spreadsheets that were attached. And There's a lot of unique little sentences and and things in there that did cause me pause. And I would just encourage everyone to take a look and make sure, this is why I got nervous about what HCD is going to see. And yes, we can get it back and change it, but if we go into HCD with five thousand units And then the second final submission is three thousand units, are we going to have a problem? That's my my threshold of nervousness. And and what's in this document has all kinds of of Very positive aspects. And one of the things we said is if we start out with five thousand and we get back to three thousand, thirty-five hundred, whatever the right number is. We may not need all of these programs. And I just want to make sure we have an opportunity To revisit them when we get down to that final picture of what we want to actually offer To make our housing element complete. It's not to say we don't want to do everything, but what's the right mix? And I will, and there's a sentence in here says, providing referrals to city rehabilitation staff. So I would just ask, take a look at the language. Because we don't have a city rehabilitation staff. That kind of thing. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilwoman Landry, other comments?
Just two minor closing comments. I'll go to what Liz just said about language. I get very confused when you use objective on one page and goals on another and you switch the language around. So please clarify that all documents are consistent and then also what she brought up about a department what she brought up about a department we don't have. And no one else had mentioned about the comment we heard about the threshold for low income. And um, if, if what you get on social security or veterans disability and you can't even qualify for low income, that seems kind of odd. So I didn't hear anybody else comment on that one.
I, I can expand a little bit on that. So I, there are different income categories. So there is very low income, there's extremely very low income. Now there's acutely very low or acutely low income. So there are income levels which go even beyond the lowest which we've identified and have been assigned as housing units which we need to plan for as a community, as part of our regional housing needs allocation. You can certainly provide incentives to build such units, but you won't receive additional credit for them as your housing program. So you only really receive credit if you say you provided an acutely low income unit, you're going to be receiving credit for it under the very low income category.
I think the comment was that she didn't qualify for any of the low income. And that looking at the, looking at what the threshold of, like, if you go over, you don't, aren't even in low income at all.
That's correct. That, that can happen. If you earn too little to qualify for a very low income unit, you will not qualify for that unit.
Okay.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thanks. So I, I'll try to um, be efficient, touch on a few things. Th- this discussion just now was very helpful, actually, and I, I would like to look at that. So thank you for clarifying. Thanks for asking a question. Um, that, that was different from my previous understanding. So um, that, that is something that, that I would like to look at that I think is important. Um, I, I, I already mentioned that other than the points uh, on the planning uh, com- commission, that their suggestions, the, 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 other than the two that I supported, I, I don't support the others. So it's, it sounds like there's clear understanding from staff on where the council's at on those. Um, really good discussion tonight on parking requirements. So, so I appreciate the, the back and forth and I, I appreciate very much that um, there, there may be different approaches that are appropriate for, for different areas, types of projects. Um, and so I would support having that be a consideration. Um, however, um, it's, you know, so I, I am supportive of more flexibility. I, I appreciate that the same approach may not make sense for every site. Um, so to the extent that staff can uh, take that into consideration, um, when, when they come back with further suggestions, um, that'd be appreciated. Um, good suggest, uh, also good discussion in the affordable housing overlay zone. I appreciate um, Councilmember Gibbons um, uh, concerns. Wh- where I'm at right now is I, I'd like, I, I, thinking of the, the funnel uh, that, that, that we bring up. I, I'd like staff to uh, come back with, with their considerations or recommendations. I, I, I think we're um, at, at a broad starting point for that. And so um, I very likely I may have the same concerns, but I don't want to necessarily take approaches off the table right now, but those are all factors to look at for, for me. Um, I also um, I agree with what was said about the, the um, climate action plan and I'll, I'll just add to the points that Councilmember Given said. Um, that, that the um, Bay Area District uh, Sequoia Standards of Significance that were uh, adopted, that, that I passed on a couple of weeks ago to staff, um, in- incentivize cities to adopt a climate action plan because it actually gives us greater flexibility um, to, to plan for, for local community needs. So I, another point, another factor to, to consider when, when looking at the timing and how that fits into um, uh, fi- fits into these other projects. Um, great points that were brought up on, on the language also by Councilmember Gibbons and, and uh, the, the ability to do a contractor. I'm, I'm open to that. I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to the prioritization approach that staff brought, uh, suggests in, in the report. Um, but to the, the extent that we can continue to prioritize this, especially as, as we're looking, for example, I, I think I heard majority support on the um, outreach. The, the final bullet point are the planning commission recommendations. To the extent that we're doing work like this and, and uh, serving our most vulnerable communities, that is important work. Um, I just think we, we need to be language accessible. Um, so, so however, we, we prioritize that. Um, I really, uh, hope that gets consideration. Um, and, and also just good points brought up on the legislative subcommittee by uh, Councilmember uh, Gibbons of, about potentially changing the criteria that, that is laid out. That, that's a, that's a great point that uh, future councils may need to, to look at. Um, on, on that note, I just wanted to uh, again, confirm so there's no question, but um, I, I think we have a majority on that, on, on the legislation, right? Just, just wanna.
I think so, yes.
Okay, um, that's all. I'll just close again by saying, really uh, appreciate all this, the, the, this work and, and the creativity being here. And I'm excited to see where we go next with, with these ideas. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Biden?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on uh, the comment about the translation. And I know there are translation services available. Other cities um, have um, their documents already um, uh, translated into various different languages. Um, the county does, the city of San Jose does, City of Gilroy does. And, and so it might be beneficial to, to reach out and find out how they did it and, and maybe use their, they might have resources available that would um, expedite the, our ability to, to do that. Um, so I would, I would add on to that. And I do agree about the parking and that it should be flexible. I know that it's not a one size fits all and it really should be kind of um, uh, evaluated uh, case by case, site by site. But, but generally, I, I support some, some type of an adjustment to it in, where, where needed, where we can encourage um, development.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just two things. One, I'm, I'm probably late in thanking staff because this was a lot of work. This is a lot of content here. Um, so thank you for that. And I'll just reiterate on the parking as well. I think La Valencia and then the Millet Rosemary area showed it's, it's, it's not one size fits. Now only it's by project, but it's also by neighborhood. And, and we have some artificial boundaries where it works well, and we have somewhere it will be a disaster. And just from experience, if we do it in an area, it's going to spread itself out. So um, I, I want to be really careful about that. The only one I'm aware of that did projects that had zero parking, where you can't even move in with a car, was in Palo Alto. But it's in the middle of parking permit zones, so you literally have nowhere to park. So you don't move in unless you don't have a car. We don't have that. So I think we're going to wind up with a big problem if we don't address it, but um, we can be flexible, but I, I don't know the answer, but it's not, it's not just a set out policy. So I think that's um.
Yeah, just a final comment as well. Um, no one had an opportunity to comment on the format of the housing element, the outline that was presented. Um, it's quite um, comprehensive, but it's very different than some of the other materials that we've seen um, presented before. And I appreciate staff putting all of the information together and giving us a heads up on how the document itself is going to be structured. There's a lot going on and I appreciate that very much. And is there another element that has to go into HCD at the same time? Just this document? Good, okay. Thank you for that. And thank you for the outline.
Okay. For staff, is there anything else that is unclear to you or you need from us?
I don't think so. I'm reading, Stephen gave me some notes. I'm just reading back, we will add veterans. I heard council support on that. I heard that council consensus on adding a number of affordable housing opportunity sites, not all of them, but especially some of the sites that Ms. Chafin brought up. And I'm hearing the affirmative on the legislative committee. I caution of notes on parking and a few other of the programs, but I think more to come on those. We'll note down your concerns and as we develop the programs, we'll, we'll flag those and address them. But that's it from staff.
Okay, then we'll uh, adjourn this to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting held on Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you.